Call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Belsley.
Here.
Blunier.
Here.
Herr.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
We have a quorum.
If you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a lot of visitors tonight. We don't have any public hearing. I'm not aware of any presentations and special reports. Is there any comments from the public?
Good evening, everyone. Lee Ann Brown. I am the executive director of the Morton Chamber of Commerce and CEO of the Economic Development Council. And just want to say a huge thank you to the Morton community, the Morton businesses, the village, police, fire, you name it, here from the Morton community for helping us host an incredible 2018 pumpkin festival. So, we can't do it without the 2,000 volunteers that come in from all over, the many youth groups, the nonprofits. And just want to say a big thanks to the entire community for coming out, supporting. And definitely to Libbies, we're very blessed to have them here in our community. And they always are a huge part of our festival as well. So, just want to share that thank you to everyone. Thanks.
And I might mention, there is a lot of good people, and the quality of the volunteers is outstanding. I even spoke to a lady that is from Kankakee that comes every year and volunteers. She married a gentleman from Morton. He grew up down the street from me. So, we even get out-of-town people that come back to Morton to work in it. And it is a great quality of volunteers. So, thank you. The consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting, September 4th, 2018, and the approval of the bills. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I have to make one more comment about the festival. We had a boat race. I'm just going to say we had a boat race, but a young man came up to me, and he, I was getting a sandwich, he goes, "You're the mayor, aren't you?" I go, "Well, how would you know that?" He was only about this tall. He goes, "I seen you in the boat race." He goes, "What I want to know is, do you get free rides and free food?" And I go, "I don't get nothing." He goes, "That is not fair." So, I just want to state that his name was, I put on my phone, Drake Souders. So, thank you, Drake. I'm just putting that word in for next year. Yes, Clint, it really happened. Village president, I have nothing else than that tonight. Village clerk.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Village administrator.
I have one topic tonight, your honor. The building, or the business district commission had met in June and September and approved three different building improvement grants that they have recommended to the board for approval. As you can remember, I'm positive off the top of my head when we changed it, that they can apply for these building improvement grants anytime during the year. So, I'll be bringing these grant approvals to you whenever they occur, rather than twice a year like they used to be. So, these are for Dave Zern, for property he owns at 214 West Jefferson, John and Lisa Crawford for 1800 South Main, and Veritiv Corp. for 510 East Cortland. And the majority of them are permanent landscaping. The Crawfords are also doing an enclosure on the entrance of their building to make it weather tight, or however you want, more secure also, because it's a daycare center.
Unless Pat advises otherwise, I'd make a motion to approve all three. No concerns.
I'll second.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Chief of police.
I have nothing to say, your honor.
Very good. Corporation council?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Director of Fire and Emergency Services?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
And thank both you gentlemen, all of you, for all your work down there. Director of Public Works?
I have one item tonight, your honor. Item A will not be discussed at this meeting. Hopefully, there'll be more information from Methodist Church for next meeting. So, I have item B, Resolution 08-19. This is authorizing an agreement with Bailey Nichols and Morgan Nichols for the Birchwood sidewalk proposal.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
One small comment, I guess I would say is, first off, Bailey and Morgan are great members of our community, first off, and also friends of our community as well. One thing that we've mentioned has been in discussion before is the idea of trying not, trying to our best to not set precedents. And I, for one, believe that this is an example of one, where we, right now, we're struggling right now with our general fund and trying to find ways to be able to keep costs down. And as much as we'd like to be able to put more and more sidewalks in different areas of town, there are certain places where I feel like there's costs that are more important than in others. And right now, our budget doesn't even allow the current expenses that we currently have. We currently are running a quite significant deficit budget in our general fund. Yes, we've had some areas that we've saved, but overall, we're still struggling in that area. And so, I, for one, feel that just simply our budget, even though as minimal as this may seem, doesn't allow any more expenses at this time.
Can I just ask for us maybe to level set and go back, because it was discussed at our last meeting, and we had some good discussion on it. And then, if I recall, we directed the staff to talk with the homeowners and ask for some consideration about obtaining some additional right-of-way. And now, this is back again before us tonight, but I guess just bring us up to speed.
Yeah. Per your direction, I did have a discussion with Bailey, actually, the next morning after. He was not in agreement with our proposal. So, we just had a brief discussion. And at that point, I emailed all of you and said, you know, told you guys that he wasn't going to accept that, what we had discussed at the meeting. And at that point, it was my feeling that it was a dead issue. It was subsequently that trustee Parrott contacted me, and I think he's got more information to share, but he requested that I put this on the agenda tonight.
Yes, I requested to put it on the agenda. Last time, we left it with the trees, you know, asking Mr. Nichols, you know, if it was possible to have an easement, maybe to save the trees. That wasn't, that wasn't something he was interested in, which I understand. And in my mind, and perhaps I didn't make myself clear, the last meeting, that I didn't really intend for it to die at that point. It was, I wanted to do the due diligence and see if there was something we could do to save the trees. There wasn't. And so, I asked Craig to bring it back up. And I talked to Mr. Nichols about, you know, if he was still okay with the original proposal of giving that sliver right-of-way, the trees being removed, and bring that back to the table. I do think, and Clint, you made the point about the monetary issues. And Craig, correct me, this is coming out of the maintenance, sidewalk maintenance fund, that we do have a budget. It was budgeted. There is money in that budgeted for situations like this.
Can I?
Sidewalk maintenance and...
Can I jump in there?
May.
So, subsequent to the last meeting, Craig and I had some brief conversations about this. And one of the other issues that exists here is our gas main is under the road. And so, I think it would be a perfectly permissible expenditure for the gas fund to cover the cost of right-of-way acquisition, because I think part of the intended plan for the gas department, based on my conversations with Craig, is to acquire this right-of-way so the gas line can be relocated out of the street and into the public right-of-way. So, in the event there's a problem down the road, we're not having to open cut a relatively major thoroughfare in town.
To be clear, I was approached after last meeting by the superintendent of the gas department after everything was dead. I honestly didn't even look at that point at the beginning. Obviously, it's clear on the map, but that was something that Scott mentioned, you know, asked me, "Hey, I heard that the other night. Is there a chance when that goes that I could put my gas in there and get it out of the road?" I was not aware of that. That was not a big deal at the time to me, but it was brought up. So, from there, it was, you know, kind of a general discussion. But I hadn't, I mean, I hadn't even talked to you about potentially the gas department paying for that.
Yeah.
And as a mechanism to pay for it, but...
And that was something, honestly, that occurred to me is after trustee Belsley's, trustee Lehman's comments about the financial position of the general fund.
Yeah.
That I think it would be a permissible expenditure for your gas fund.
So, my intention tonight was not to bring that up myself. I thought this was more of a sidewalk thing at this point, but obviously, that would be a benefit.
We don't want to be tearing up streets, and we should get the right-of-way, the last piece, because that's the only piece of right-of-way we didn't have about, I would guess, about 18 years ago, when we put curbs in Birchwood. There was no curb and gutter in Birchwood at the time. But this farm, Homestead, was the only piece. We didn't have the right-of-way. So, that makes sense why the gas is out in the street.
The previous property owners wouldn't grant the right-of-way.
Because they had that hill and that big tree, and they just wouldn't give it.
I believe electric's out there, too.
But I, we've got to be careful, I guess. This is sort of, this is new information now, how it's going to be funded. But before I get to my other concerns, I guess, this even raises another concern, is that we have other areas of town that have either no sidewalk, dilapidated, settled, cracked sidewalk. And if it has a gas main anywhere near it, there's a justifiable case for those homeowners to be coming to us and asking for their sidewalk to be replaced, if there's some safety issues with regard to the location or maintenance of our gas lines. Or are we going to get on a slippery slope here with...
I don't agree with that, that that's what we'd be doing. And obviously, there are other areas of sidewalk that we keep an eye on. We slabjack, we replace. There are other areas of town I would agree, but I don't think that would be the issue.
But just to understand, how is it eligible for the gas funds, again? We're going to be, are we doing anything with the gas main?
So, the action that's before you is to enter into an agreement with the Nichols for them to dedicate right-of-way. The acquisition, and the cost to acquire the right-of-way is the cost of installing the sidewalk. So, the agreement says, you don't have to write a check to them, but our consideration to them is a promise that we will install sidewalk. And so, my comment was simply, and nothing you're voting on tonight is an expenditure. I mean, you're approving the agreement, and the agreement commits putting in the sidewalk, but the actual, you're not approving a contract to hire somebody to put the sidewalk in so funding decisions could be made later. I was simply commenting that because the right-of-way acquisition, I think there is a long-term goal for your gas department to re, one of the things we always look towards in a special fund versus general fund principle is if we can reallocate costs that would otherwise go to the general fund into a special fund, you're usually better off doing that, because your general fund dollars go to a lot of different places. Special fund dollars can only be used for the development and betterment of that fund. The acquisition of this right-of-way is of benefit to the gas department, and I believe, and I don't want to speak for Director Oatermilk, but I believe there would be an intention, one of the benefits of the acquisition is that the gas main, which is under Birchwood, could be relocated off of the street and into the right-of-way, which makes for better maintenance issues, and Craig can speak to that more. But because you're acquiring right-of-way, which will be used for the purpose of relocating your gas mains, and you can use gas funds to pay the cost of that acquisition, I believe. But if you take the action tonight, you're not committing on which funds are coming out of, although I offer that because funding became an issue.
So, what would your supervisor want us to do? Would he want us to acquire the right-of-way to relocate the gas main, or not, Craig?
Alls I'm saying is, Scott Simmons, the gas superintendent.
Yes, what was going to say?
I really wasn't paying attention to that, honestly.
I get that part, but if the opportunity...
But he came to me and said, "Man, if we get that right-of-way, I'd love to put that gas back off the street where it needs to be." He did say that. I wasn't coming here tonight to have that discussion. I thought it was going to stay on the sidewalk and go that route.
It's a side benefit.
But yeah, that's an extra, extra benefit to it. I hadn't had a discussion even with Pat on how to pay for it. I think you just brought that up as an alternative. If the general fund is the concern and the issue, that there could be alternative funding, is what Pat's saying. That's it.
And I concur with Craig's summary, and I didn't mean to steer Director Oatermilk off of his intended presentation, but during the discussion, it occurred to me that, you know, that could be a solution to the financial concern.
I'm trying to be cautious. This was a split vote last time, and that's why I asked trustee Parrott, "Hey, if you want to bring this back, I ask you, I don't want to be working for both sides on this, because I know there are some that I've had discussions for it and some against it. If you want to have some further discussions, that may streamline it. And if you want me to put it on the agenda again, I will do so at yours at any other trustee's request."
Yes. I could kind of continue where I left off there. The, kind of summarized, the reason we're wanting, or I am wanting to put the sidewalk in is I feel it's a safety issue down Birchwood Street. It is a collector's street. We have no side, you know, there's a gap there with no sidewalk. You have sidewalk all the way to that point, and then after that point. There is sidewalk on the other side of the street, but being a fairly high-traffic and higher-speed street is not a safe place to, if you were coming down Birchwood on that side of the street, you would not want to be crossing the street there mid-block. Now, I would agree with Randy. There are, there are other places sidewalk in town that has, you know, that needs work. There's other places in town. Whether this would be, you know, a more traffic area, I don't know. I can't speak to, you know, the daily, you know, people that walk down the sidewalk. What I think is, though, we have an opportunity now, that Mr. Nichols has graciously, you know, agreed to grant the right-of-way to be able to put that in, where we didn't have the chance before. You know, we would, this sidewalk would have, if we would have been given the right-of-way before, this sidewalk would have already been in, you know, 18 years ago or 20 years ago, whenever Birchwood was done. The only reason it's not there was because we couldn't get right-of-way. And now, we have the opportunity to get that right-of-way.
It all became, I guess, if we look at the origin of this whole issue, why we're even here tonight, and why we discussed it at our last meeting, was...
I wanted the right-of-way and the sidewalk, because it finishes a subdivision. The sidewalk on the other side, we put in for the park. In a deal, we did something else with the park, so that side of the street could get to the park. That sidewalk wasn't put in across the street for this subdivision. But I've been in charge of streets for most of my 20 years, so we filled in sidewalks every opportunity we could. We filled in several different streets. And this is the last one of this subdivision on the collector's street and the right-of-way. And I just feel like with all the technology that Craig has to deal with in these right-of-ways, we need to get right-of-ways when we have them, because the next 20 years, who knows what we're going to have to put in.
I'd just like to add that my thoughts are exactly what yours are, trustee Parrott. With the addition, the fact, if you look at this road, about where the sidewalk is, is where two lanes go into, or four lanes go into two lanes. And I've driven enough years to know that sometimes things happen at those areas, and cars are going at a higher rate of speed. This could have been done many years ago, but it wasn't. This is our opportunity. We didn't have the opportunity then. This is where my focus is. For safety reasons, we bring the gas from underneath the street and bring it into our zone. I am one who's very conscious about my own personal family budget, and I would be of this, too, but I think this is a better place to fund all those funds, to get this done, get it out of the way. And just think about this street right here. This is the main corridor down to Main Street, where people walk, to get to Main Street, where everything happens. It's a very important street, and I think it's, I respect trustee Lehman, I trust, respect trustee Belsley, and I respect what they have to say, but I believe in this case, we need to move forward with this for those reasons. And I think we're, the two folks involved are in agreement with it, and I just think it's the right thing to move forward with it.
Can we just remind everyone what the deal is, I guess? When we talk about agreement, so far, all we've talked about is the agreement that's in place for conveyance of right-of-way. But the other part of that agreement that's not clear to me, I guess, because it's not mentioned in the right-of-way agreement, but removal of trees, or what the obligation is for the installation of sidewalk right now. And I'd like that brought out on the table, just for a full understanding of where we're at. Right now, as I understand it, at our last meeting, we were presented with a quote for approximately $13,000 for installing 250-linial feet of sidewalk at that location in return for the conveyance of the right-of-way and the removal of the trees. I have a lot of heartburn over removal of the trees. And in regards to a safety issue, I think we're hard-pressed to say it's a high-priority safety issue. That's been there for decades. I doubt, I'm not certain, but I don't know if there's any report that we ever have on file, where there's been an accident or an incident at that location as a result of not having sidewalk. However, I do know there's other locations around town, closer to grade schools, and more high-traffic, pedestrian traffic, that would warrant sidewalk installation. And for $13,000, we could do a lot of that. And the other point I'd want to make is, yes, we've got the funds there, but just because they're appropriated, doesn't mean we have to use them. And to state what, restate, I guess, what trustee Lehman already shared, we've got a sizable deficit in our overall budget, and specifically in our general fund, to the tune of approximately $400,000. And if we don't show some resolve to chip away at that deficit on issues like this, I don't know how we're ever going to gain good faith with the public in showing we're good managers of the funds, and how we're going to get our balance, our budget in balance on this. So, I guess, I have several concerns. I think we're, I'd like to see us be a little more strategic in our selection of projects and the use of our capital on this, rather than, you know, I don't want to be disrespectful, but somewhat of a drive-by project selection process. I think we need to be a little more strategic in our planning on this. And I think the way this came about appeared to be a good opportunity, because the homeowner was improving their front yard, and it looked like the ideal time, maybe, to put some sidewalk in. But as it turns out, we're carrying the ball, or, you know, quite a bit on this, with 250-linial feet of sidewalk. So, it's a great benefit to the homeowner, and I can't fault them at all, including some tree removal. But I don't know if this is the best deal for the citizens of Morton.
To go to your, to go to your trees, in order to put the sidewalk in, trees, the trees have to come down in order to regrade that area to put the sidewalk in. And I think one of the benefits to Mr. Nichols, and correct me if I misspeak here, but one of the benefits of having that sidewalk is the ability to regrade that lawn so it's easier to maintain through there, which can't be done with the trees there as they are. Now, Mr. Beckendorf has expressed interest in the trees, the wood of the trees, to, for, you know, personal family, family use. It's been discussed. Now, it hasn't been worked out completely, but it's been brought up about the cost of the removal of the trees. I think there's some value of the lumber there. It's been expressed that some of that lumber you may want to purchase, or work out some sort of deal about offsetting some of that cost of the tree removal. But the trees, the trees would be removed by the village in order to put the sidewalk in.
So, we'd incur that cost, the way it's proposed now?
Yes.
And that would be approximately, or what are we looking at?
Couple thousand dollars.
So, we're back to approximately the same cost that we discussed at the last meeting?
Yeah. I mean, I got a, I got a price from a contractor using, you know, unit prices from our past projects, which I think's a pretty good price. That's around $13,000. So, I have the trees on there. It's about a $15,000 project. And what he's saying is, trying to come to an agreement with Jim and Bailey after, where he would, you know, participate in the cost of that tree removal.
Is it fair, again, I think I mentioned this last time, to look truly at the cost of what this is, by the time you have legal and engineering fees that we've already got involved in it, we're probably looking closer to maybe $20,000?
Yeah, I mean, we've got, I mean, I don't think it's more than 20, but you're upwards of that, yeah.
Okay.
I would say, if I would be in agreement with that.
Okay.
Greg, wouldn't there be quite a bit of earth excavation required to make the grades work?
Yeah, it's going to take some work.
And that, is that included in that $13,000 estimate?
Yes, that is included. And behind the sidewalk, the grading that Nate talked about, fortunately, the homeowner is capable of doing that work behind it. But the contractor included in there will be able to core that out, so it's an appropriate level behind the sidewalk, or behind the curb.
So, your grade from top of curb to edge of sidewalk would be something in the range of 4%?
I would say plus or minus, yeah, in that 5% range.
And that, that excavation would be part of our contract?
Yes.
And then, we would basically leave back the sidewalk at a significantly lower elevation than what the existing grade is, and the homeowner is then going to grade from there back?
Yes, that's the discussion that we've had. And he's got equipment, and I think you've got the capability of doing that.
Are the trees staying, or no, for you? Do you like, I mean, you know what I mean?
I like the trees.
Okay.
But in order for the sidewalk, if you...
Gotcha.
There's, there's no way around it.
But there's also a chance that those trees are going to go, even if we don't put the sidewalk in?
Yeah. I mean, go look around right now. One doesn't look as good as the other one.
That's absolutely, that's the other part of it.
Any other comments?
So, we don't have, I mean, right now, it's being proposed, this would be funded out of the general fund.
Your action tonight is limited to approving the agreement, so you're not making a funding commitment as to your source. And discussion before I had my thoughts tonight that I mentioned for your consideration was, it was a general fund expenditure. Craig, we'll come back to you with approval of the contract. And at that time, I think you can give direction on where you want the funds to come from.
If they want to change their motion, can they change the motion to taking it out of the gas fund?
I would say the appropriate time, the most appropriate time to indicate where the funds would come from would be when you approve the contract, because tonight, you're just approving the agreement for the dedication. But if that was an important consideration, that could be included in the motion, if the movement and the person who seconded it were agreeable.
To my understanding, there's pretty strict restrictions on what we can and can't take out of the gas fund. So, I guess that's my part.
I wouldn't have suggested if I didn't think it was appropriate.
Okay. So, we think we're talking like 100%, or approximately? It's tough to know exactly. I know...
I have no reservations about those funds coming out of the gas fund.
Okay.
So, the gentlemen that made the first and second, if you want to make the gas fund part of it, you can, or we'll vote on the motion as it is. So, if you want to amend it, you can.
Keep it with it.
Keep it with it. And we can, if it passes, then we can go through and adjust to where that's coming from when the contract will go through.
Okay. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
No.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
No.
Blunier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Planning and zoning officer, you have one item?
Yes, sir. The first one that you have before you is ordinance 19-13. This is the demolition ordinance that Craig and Attorney McGrath and I have been working on for some time. Pat's going to touch, fill you in on some of the details. I just wanted to point out that we put together a list of properties that this, adopting this ordinance would affect. We have at least six properties that we're aware of that would, by the adoption of this ordinance, by that date next year in '19, not to go back and remove foundations or pavement or, two of them are residential properties that were demolished, and there's like a sunken area, I don't know, four-foot deep, five-foot deep, something like that, that they would have to fill in and grade to satisfactory conditions. And not to say that there's not something else laying out there that we're not fully aware of, but we tried to come up with the best and most accurate list that we could, and that's what you have before you now. So, if, Attorney McGrath, if you could walk them through that, that ordinance.
Can we have a motion?
So, we had some discussion of this ordinance at the last meeting, and I had inadvertently included the prior draft, the agreement. So, the draft is different today compared to the last, in that we've inserted the proposed permit fee schedule of $100 for residential property, $250 for property in any other zoning district. Also, the application to existing zoning sites provision has been updated. Permits would begin October 1st of this year. Permits would begin October 1st of this year. The grandfathered properties would have until October 1st, 2019, which is some of the properties, the properties listed before you would all fall within that category. In other respects, it's consistent with the ordinance that was in your last board packets that we discussed last time, essentially intended to address safety and propriety of, ensure that proper procedures are followed in future demolitions, that demolition sites are left safe, and that sites of existing demolitions, which are in an unsafe condition now, are rectified in the near future.
Any comments?
Is there, I was just curious, I appreciate the listing to give us an idea of some of the subject properties that this would impact on this. Has there been any communication or feedback on them at all at this point?
We've had discussions. That's just something we put together pretty quick, just kind of going back and forth without doing even a detailed drive-by, just from our experience. These are the sites that we thought we should share with you guys tonight, that would probably be notified immediately.
Is it advisable to, or just, I mean, to consider this as a first reading? I mean, and just because of the weightiness of this ordinance and the potential impact, it's an important ordinance, is that something we should consider, or is it?
I don't, I don't have a problem. I think it's up to you guys. I think we've brought forward, and I'll let you speak too, Roger, brought forward what we think is a pretty good one, but I don't know that.
Moving forward?
I don't think waiting two weeks hurts anything on our end. I mean, we've been working on it for quite some time. Would you agree to that?
I would agree. I would add that one of these properties, I won't even mention which one, when they did the demolition of their property, we've been talking about this for a number of years, and I mentioned it to them. I said, "Right now, what you've got here is okay, it's acceptable." But I think there's going to come a time down the road, and I'm not sure when that is, that we're going to be coming back to you to say, "Now, you need to finish doing the rest of this. Remove the foundation, remove the excess pavement." And I've not, and I've since brought it up to them several times, and I've never gotten any pushback on that, so.
I think what you're saying is, it's not going to be a surprise.
Not with one of them. It should be a surprise.
And then we did, Craig and I have talked, and I think we've discussed it with Pat, maybe I'm misspeaking here, but that we would have Pat write a letter to these six property owners, telling them of this change, and what their responsibilities are going to be in this coming year.
They still have a year as well, right? Is that correct?
Or if you guys thought something was more appropriate.
The draft proposed they'd have essentially one year, they'd have until October 1st, 2019, to come into compliance.
We kind of threw out a year, and we thought that was appropriate, but that could obviously be revised by all of you.
And just on, to speak on a procedural side of things, it is a relatively long ordinance. While I'd be happy to do a formal first reading, other possible actions would be, I could give you a more detailed summary than what I've given, and it could be tabled. Like I said, ordinarily, when you do a formal first reading, I do the reading. I'm happy to do that. It is three, three and a half pages of substantive regulatory text. Happy to do that if that's the action you prefer. Again, I could do a synopsis, and you could consider this an invitation to the public to comment and table it.
And we did discuss it in some length last meeting, so just, whatever your trusty-
Does a year make you, like, that's where I'm like, well, I get a year, so, that's why, like, if I'm comfortable with it, I'm not too worried about it, since I get a year. If it was like, hey, they have 60 days, then I'd be a little more wary of moving forward with it, so I'm okay.
And I like the fact there's going to be an initiative to reach out to these properties, and I guess personally notify them, and make them specifically aware of the ordinance, and bring it to their attention that way, so I think that's a good thing.
I mean, I, the ordinance was briefly discussed two weeks ago, and if there was someone out there that had any concern, they did have two weeks to come to this, you know, now come to this meeting and express those concerns, or find it, you know, obtain more information from Roger, Craig, to, you know, see what it was all about. So, I'd say, I mean, we essentially had a first reading two weeks ago. At least, probably should have been made, or was made aware of it.
So, what would you like to do? Have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Motion second.
Who's making the first?
I think I made it.
Trustee Parrott had it.
I think he's second.
If there's no other comments, we'll call the roll.
Newman?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
The next item on your agenda, Your Honor, is, I'd like to introduce to you Josh Poszinski, who's a partner with Trajectory Energy Partners. And he's going to speak to you in relation to that project that came before you a couple weeks ago, that was forwarded from Tazewell County on a proposed solar farm off of, north of Interstate 74 and west of Tennessee Avenue. So, Josh.
Good evening. My name's Josh Poszinski, a partner with Trajectory Energy Partners. I'm here with two of my colleagues, Colleen Callahan and Dan Newcomb, who are working with me and the rest of our team on a project that is, as Roger noted, we're proposing. And so, I really welcome the opportunity to, you know, address the board and to speak a little bit about the project, give you a little bit of background about it, answer any questions that you have about it. We have been working with the landowner on this project for about the last nine or so months, and I wanted to give a little bit of background about why we're proposing this project, and also why you're seeing, you know, a new opportunity for solar in Illinois. So, we have, in Illinois, the Future Energy Jobs Act, which was passed at the end of 2016, and created incentives for a variety of solar projects. And essentially, what you're going to see are rooftop solar, you're going to see solar on warehouses, behind factories, you're going to see the really large solar projects, you know, a few of them spread around the state, you know, that you're talking about 100 acres or more. What we're proposing is what's known as community solar. And on the next slide, there's a diagram of what community solar is. Essentially, anyone who wants to participate in the benefits of solar, and that can include supporting local clean energy, getting savings on your energy bill, you know, promoting construction jobs in communities around the state, can subscribe to a community solar project. So, this is about a 15 or 17-acre piece of land where we would put a solar project, it would send electricity to the grid, and anybody in the utility territory can subscribe to that project. And we at Trajectory, in working with the communities that we work with to propose these projects, make a commitment that we go first to the communities that we're working in, to offer the opportunity to subscribe to the project. And what that means as a subscriber is you support the project, you are credited for a savings on your energy bill with Ameren, and you get the opportunity, you know, to drive down the street and say, you know, "I'm saving money," and, you know, creating local clean energy. We also offer the opportunity to schools, local businesses, and really anybody who can't put solar on their house and take, otherwise take advantage of the incentives that the state's put together. So, there are a couple, you know, specific benefits on the next slide that I just want to share and that I've mentioned briefly. The savings on electricity. What we're proposing for this project, it's what's known as pollinator-friendly ground cover. So, that's ground cover that both is good for pollinators, it also can be good for drainage and can restore the soil. The idea is that you put in low-growing plants that are species that both attract pollinators, but also don't grow above the panels. And I'll show you a picture of what that would look like and what the project would look like a little bit later. The state legislature also passed a bill this summer, which sort of codifies what the tax revenue would be from these projects. So, we estimate that the revenue on an annual basis for a project like this would be about $15,000 a year. And finally, we've worked with a number of schools and nonprofits to develop some educational materials that we like to share with the schools and the communities where we work, because it's, you know, there's both great sort of science modules, business modules, and the opportunity to both learn about a new technology, a new business that is, you know, helping landowners across the state. And, you know, we've found a lot of interest in the local schools that we've approached where we've proposed projects. And so, there's just a little bit more information about, on the next slide, about the subscriptions. We estimate that the savings for energy, if you subscribe to one of these projects, would be about 10% lower than the energy you'd otherwise buy from the utility. And just on the next slide, we talk a little bit more about the tax revenue, as I said, it would be about $15,000. So, the location that we're talking about today is, as we said, it's north of 74 and then west of Tennessee. The landowners who, this parcel is currently being farmed, and the landowners who knew that we were working with communities and landowners in the state, and a number of them in the area, approached us and said, "Hey, you know, we're really interested in this solar opportunity." And what we do when a landowner approaches us is we say, "Does this project make sense as a solar project?" Which is to say, is it a pretty flat piece of ground? Is there good drainage? Is it, you know, not covered in woods that we'd have to, you know, cut down? And importantly, is it close to transmission that we can then connect to the grid easily, and it would be integrated with the grid well? This site met all of those criteria, and also met the criteria that we really emphasize for our landowners when we talk to them, which is, is this for you, you're both a good economic decision, but also one that you're comfortable making for 20 or 30 years? Because we recognize that, you know, landowners, and in particular, the ones that we work with, we want to make sure they understand that this is a project that will provide them with a consistent source of rental income for the life of the project. And we agree with the landowner, and actually, we also have to agree with the state that at the end of the life of the project, we remove everything from the ground, and I'll talk a little bit more about what goes into a solar project. But the idea is, we want that landowner to know that, you know, they're signing up for a long-term commitment, and the reason they may be doing it is because, you know, they see a constant stream of revenue, which is a nice hedge against, you know, the other, rental or commodity prices that they're facing. And, you know, a lot of our landowners are motivated to support clean energy, and they like the idea of something that they can put there for a fixed period of time, and then have other opportunities with the land in the longer run. And so, you know, that was the case for this project, and so we move forward, and we have been working with the utility, and then, as Roger mentioned, with the county to start putting together all the pieces we need for this project. And importantly, what happens in Illinois with these community solar projects is, under the legislation that's supporting them, there's a limited pool of credits that are being set forth by the state for these community solar projects. Once we get the project far enough along, we'll be able to apply for those credits. There's a lottery that is scheduled to open in January. And hopefully, you know, assuming the state moves at the schedule that it's, that it will move at, we would know, you know, in sort of March, April, May, excuse me, of next year, whether or not we'd have the ability to move ahead with building this next year, or whether it might be in a later block of funding. And so, that is, so that's the location, and I'll just, there's sort of two or three more slides. The next one shows you a little bit of what this site looks like, and it will be easier to see on your handout. But essentially, these are panels that are north-south facing, and they track the sun during the day, so that you actually get more production as, you know, you track the sun rather than being fixed. It would be, all the electrical equipment and the solar panels would be enclosed by a fence. The project as proposed complies with the county zoning ordinance, which permits the special use for solar in this parcel. This parcel is zoned as light industrial, and this is, you know, the, under the ordinance, this project complies with all the setbacks and other requirements under the ordinance, and we work closely with the county to ensure that, you know, the proposal met our needs, the utility's needs, the zoning ordinance, as well as the landowner's desires. And I will just close on two, two more sort of points, and then really welcome any questions. The next slide shows what a pollinator-friendly ground cover and a solar project look like together. So, you can see that the panels wouldn't be more than about 10 or 12 feet high, they'd be behind about a seven-foot fence, which is as required by the National Electric Code. This is, you know, an example of the pollinator-friendly ground cover that I mentioned. And you can see the idea is that you're planting species that don't grow above the panels, because certainly you wouldn't want to be shading them while you're, it's hard to farm sun if you're farming ground cover underneath. So, the last slide, and then I'll turn it quickly over to my colleague, Colleen Callahan, to talk about, you know, some of the work we've done in the community around this project, is just to give you a little bit more of an overview about sort of the process of developing one of these projects. So, you know, landowner approached us, we entered into a site option lease agreement with that landowner, and we're obviously working through the zoning permitting process right now. We work with the utility on interconnection. As I mentioned, we'll apply to the state for the support required to build these projects, and then we would move ahead with construction once all those pieces were in place. Importantly, construction would take about three to six months in total. You'd never have more than an 18-wheeler, there are no big cranes, all of the equipment used to install the panels and the steel posts that they go on, about the same sort of size and weight as other normal farm equipment. And then, once the project is operating, there's no hazardous glare, the panels are coated with an anti-glare covering. You shouldn't really be able to hear the electrical equipment outside of the fence line, particularly where it is at 74 in Tennessee, you're not going to hear anything else, you know, over the road. And so, that's, that's sort of what the impact would be locally. And at that site, it's zoned light industrial, it's surrounded by either light industrial or agriculture, these own parcels. You know, there is a demolition company to the northwest, there's agriculture to the north and the east, and then, excuse me, north and west, and then 74 is to the south, and Tennessee is to the east of the parcel. And so, let me turn it over to Colleen briefly, to talk a little bit about what we've done in the community around outreach, and then open it up for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to explain how we have approached this. And when I say "we," I've been working with Trajectory Energy for about a year and a half, and my primary responsibilities have been outreach and communication, because solar is new to Illinois. As Josh said, the Future Energy Jobs Act passed at the end of 2016, and there are so many questions to be asked and answered. And listening to your discussion tonight is proof positive that none of us feel good about anything new or a change if we're just announced with it. So, to communicate is the beginning of understanding. I was saying to Josh earlier tonight, on my tombstone, I'm confident that my family will probably write that, to communicate is the beginning of understanding, because that is what I believe at my core. And so, to have an open house, which we do before every one of these projects reaches the zoning level, where anyone would receive a notice in the mail, or before they see that red and white sign posted on a post somewhere near their property, we try to let them know in advance that there is the consideration for a project in their area. On this particular piece of property, there are no neighbor houses within the direct proximity, no houses touching this property. On other properties, I will go door to door, I will share the kind of information that you have before you- you have before you in your packets. If the people are home, I visit with them personally, let them know we're having an open house and informational meeting, invite them, encourage them to come if they're not home. I leave it under a rock or a flower pot so that we can make sure that we've done our best. But no matter how broadly you cast a net, you don't catch all the fish. So we really do appreciate the opportunity to present something similar to you as we have done previously. I was just talking to LeAnn here because I wanted to make sure that I said Luncheon Learn, which the chamber hosts. And we were invited to a Luncheon Learn earlier this year, in January, I believe, where we talked about community solar. We also were back in March, and at one of ours, Craig, you attended, and we, and we had a conversation, Mr. Mayor, I believe you were at one, and we had a conversation. But for the others here, many of you were not in attendance, we all have busy schedules, and it probably just didn't work into your own. So we are glad to be here to answer your questions and to help everyone learn. And finally, as Josh talked about, the, the increase in the tax revenue. My previous responsibility was as the State Director for USDA Rural Development. And as the State Director for Rural Development for the United States Department of Agriculture, I traveled to all 102 counties. I grew up on a farm and I still live on a farm. And having met with elected officials, with business leaders, with directors of public works, what USDA Rural Development does is offer loans and grants to help meet the needs of rural communities. And I know there are no rainy day funds any longer in our rural communities. So this is an opportunity for us to help bring tax revenue. And while this does not sit in the city of Morton proper, it is within that mile and a half, which means that the township would benefit, the community, the schools. So it is an opportunity for us to have additional revenue that was not there before, possibly for some of these projects that you have been discussing, either within the city or within the county, as those tax dollars get dispersed. So again, thanks, Josh, for letting me explain a little bit about how we've approached this community by community and how we've done it here in Morton, because I was asked also to speak at a Kiwanis meeting and gave a very detailed presentation there as well earlier in the year. So we can't overdo communications, and again, we're very happy to be here tonight to answer your questions.
Do you trustees have any questions?
Yes, real quick, on the, the length of the lease, I heard a couple different things. Is 20 years or 25, or what kind of is, and then is there like a five-year kind of extension?
Right, so...
Talk to us like a little bit about that.
Yeah, so the way we typically structure these leases is that you do sort of a, something like a 25-year lease with an opportunity to extend with the landowner for, you know, up to 30 or 35 years. Now, we also know that, you know, plans change and there are opportunities to, to terminate the lease during the life of the lease, but, you know, yeah, go ahead.
I guess for me, when I, when I look at this particular property, I mean, bless us all, if it gets developed within the next 25 years, right? I mean, that would be amazing, which, so, and one of the things I like about this, from my understanding, when those, the steel tubes go in, they are, I mean, you're, you're pulling them right out, so it could, it could either go back to farming agricultural, or it could go into a developable, developable, whether it's commercial or residential or whatever that might be.
Yeah, and our...
Is that a fair...
That's right, and our obligation is essentially to restore the land to where it was before we came in.
And no, how about roads? Any, does there have to be any permanent road structure, anything that has to go in there that would mess with that a little bit as far as the...
The road entrance would be off of Tennessee. It would go, you know, sort of a little bit into, into the site, but it wouldn't, there'd be no paving there.
I think this is, is interesting, this doesn't happen often in other projects where you have an opportunity for improvement on a property, and whoever that entity is typically comes to a body and says, "We need electric, we need water, we need the infrastructure at this location for us to build this project, which will ultimately benefit the community." This project requires no infrastructure. There is no ask of, of any township or any municipal body, and yet, there will be an improvement on that land.
And we would like to bring your water, gas, and sewer...
Yes, revenue. Yeah, we can't...
You probably wouldn't get it until you have to pay for it anyhow.
I have one question. You guys, Trajectory, have obtained contracts and permits for nearly 20 sites in four counties around Illinois. What percentage of those sites do you actually see constructed?
You know, I, I wish I had the answer to that, but let me tell you, go in a little bit more detail about how the program, you know, works as we understand it today, and the state's still rolling up these rules. We'll submit these projects to a lottery, and then we're, you know, a little bit at the mercy of, of lottery. That being said, we don't develop any projects, we will not present any projects that we don't think we could construct if we won, you know, the lottery, so that if we come to a community and say, you know, "If, if this gets the support that we need from the state, that, then, you know, we would be able to move ahead with this project." So, you know, I ask myself that question every day, but I can tell you that, you know, we have made a long-term commitment in these communities to continue working on solar. And so I, you know, I really hope actually that I, I have the opportunity to be back, you know, in a year or two with another project, if it's appropriate. But more to the point, you know, we, we are a little bit at, at the mercy of, of a lottery in terms of the answer to that question.
So now would it, would, okay, let's say that it's a lottery, and how many of them are they going to give out in the state this year?
So it's, it's split up between ComEd and Ameren, and it's, it's, so you may see, you know, you may, may see somewhere between 20 and 50 built over the next, you know, year or two, but it's going to depend on how quickly the state moves to.
And they, do they, well, I guess in that part of it, let's say you don't win it in the first one, or you don't get enough. Can the project hold, everything stays equal, and then the next year, are they going to do more? So, okay, so if it's a good site, based on all of those, even if you don't get the lottery numbers, then there's a chance that that could still happen the next year?
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, contingent on, on lots of things out of our control, but yeah, that's our plan.
And the money towards, you know, from the lottery that gives out credits, that's basically 100%, I know this is more of a state question, from the electric bills that we as citizens pay. We're paying into it for, so the citizens are paying for all this.
So, right, so that's actually a great point. So this is actually, the, the money being collected for these projects are, are coming out of, you know, Ameren and ComEd utility bills. And so essentially, by being able to build a project, you know, in a community, you know, being able, you know, putting those, that money to use in the community, otherwise, you know, being some...
But for future sites, that would be just how much money's in the pot from the citizens that are paying on their utility bills?
Yeah, and there's a, there's a legislative rate cap on that, and so there is a limited pot of funding today. But another way to think about it is, you know, this is going to hopefully create a longer-term opportunity for solar in Illinois.
And the goal is by 2025 to be what percent in Illinois?
Is it 25% by...
25%.
Yeah.
Does that mean it's going to be a reduction of 25% in coal-fired power, or do they continue to do...
Well...
I know I'm asking you a question.
No, I mean, it's a good question, it's a complicated question, it will depend a lot on, again, what the overall energy mix is between gas, solar, wind, coal, and, and nuclear. One, I mean, one, one of the, the other things that happened when this job, Future Energy Jobs Act came into place is that the long-term plan for some of the nuclear plants was, was also put into place.
And this is a 2-megawatt site, which we did send, all of you, Julie, worked hard to get those taxes, and for a 2-megawatt within the village of Morton would be about $10,000 spread out, if it was in the village, it'd be a little less than 10 for a 2-megawatt.
And the 2-megawatt size is enough to power about 400 homes, 400 to 500 homes, depending upon the size of the homes, or four or five schools, depending upon the size of the school. So that gives you some reference as to how much electricity is being generated from a 2-megawatt location.
It would be nice down the road at some point, I know we're talking of Cypress Creek and some others, but we always mention the benefit to the citizens, okay, that can buy into this, but what are the details of that? Like me, as Joe Citizen...
Right.
How, how, how can I, how can you show me, yeah, I'd love 10%, but how do I get there? How do I, how do we trust that that opportunity's going to be there?
Right.
And I haven't read anything anywhere that shows that opportunity.
And so part of the reason is that we're still waiting on final rules from the state, not really about the program so much as about some of the legal requirements around consumer protection and so on, to be able to start offering that, although we are, you know, sort of chomping at the bit to be able to talk to people about this a little bit more.
So I mean, that's an exciting benefit, 400 homes, if 400 citizens of Morton could save 10% on their electricity, that, I mean, I think that changes the landscape a little bit.
The other part that's interesting that you brought up is that the fact that we're already paying for it, it says it's to go somewhere, so why wouldn't we want to get it here where we actually benefited from the reduction in cost and the job creation? So if we're already getting, right, I mean, that's a fair...
Yeah.
We're paying for it, so why wouldn't we want to get, you know, why wouldn't we want to take care of the, the side benefits of it, which would be a reduction in energy costs, plus we would have additional job creation, which we all know spins off to other, you know, the other parts of it, so...
Yeah.
I have one, possibly...
I'm just going to add, pardon my accent, I already stood, I don't want to just keep going up and down. One thing we didn't mention that we do at every open house, no matter what the location is, is that Trajectory has pledged to use local union labor when these projects are deconstructed.
Having grown up in an area that saw a lot of strip mines come in, saw a lot of companies go bankrupt and leave with all their infrastructures, some of which is still sitting there 50 years later. I see you got a decommissioning agreeing, in your agreement, however, if Trajectory were to go bankrupt, is there any regulations as to who's going to maintain and who's going to decommission the equipment in the future?
Yeah, so there's, there's essentially, yeah, there's a, there's the, the county ordinance, which has requirements around that. In addition, the state also passed a requirement that we essentially pay money into a fund that is dedicated for decommissioning in the event that, you know, yeah...
Would that be part of the risk of the property owner as well, that they would be responsible for that because that they're, you know, the benefits of the rent, they would obviously have to, if something did go bad, that they would be responsible for? Is that in the, is that...
Well, so our obligation is, is to remove it, because we're paying into essentially a decommissioning security, there's money backing up that, up that commitment. And so that's a commitment, it's really to the landowners, to the county, and to the state that, that we've had to make that commitment.
The subject site's approximately 16 acres. Is that, is there a range that's ideal? Is, is it wide open? Is there a minimum size that, for future projects that may be posed or...
So on that, on this parcel, we're, yeah, we're taking that 16 acres, and that's about average for one of these 2-megawatt projects. You can play with that a little bit, but on a, you know, sort of a nice level, pretty square, this is a pretty, sort of a, about a, a pretty efficient design for this kind of project. And so, yeah, that's about, that's about average for a 2-megawatt project like this with a tracking system.
Why correct that? 2-megawatts is roughly the equivalent, you might not know this, that's like one wind turbine, basically.
Yeah, so the, the bigger wind turbines that, that you'll see installed today are typically about two or a little bit bigger now, yeah.
Any other questions?
Roger, did you want to add, October 1st is our next meeting on this one?
Right.
But I know we spoke last time.
We'll meet on October 1st, and then Tazewell County meets on October 2nd, their, their day after us, so our response, we would get, we would forward that in an email to Tazewell County, once the board trustees here is directed what we're to write, so...
Okay, thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you. So the board like to think about it, bring it back to the next meeting, or...
This is a non-action thing anyway, right?
Correct, it's on the agenda as a presentation only, so Roger can have on reaction at the next meeting, you can track that.
And we left a map with all of you guys, too, that we'd like to get some feedback as we go, maybe we can come up with a consensus even, aside from Trajectory, but the other companies to be a little more consistent when they walk in our office. I know we got a meeting with me and, and Lenora here upcoming, too, on the same subject, so we'd love to get your guys' input on that, just to streamline.
So maybe each of you trustees can get back with Craig and Roger. Village trustees, anyone have anything tonight? If not, could I have a motion to close?
Second.
All those in paper?
Aye.